Personnel committee meeting of twelve October and fifteen October. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Patrick. There I think Pat, I was looking at Patrick and Brian did that. Uh, okay, so uh, any comments, questions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented, signal I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Item three, claims, review and recommendations. Make them up for this one.
Uh, Stan, can I move to recommend the board to approve the second October twenty twenty nine recurring claims of two hundred thirty seven thousand four hundred ninety three dollars and twenty six cents?
Thank you Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Tim. Uh, any comments or questions? I didn't, I just saw the big number, but that's debt payment, so uh.
Uh, let's let them know what, Melissa, what payment is that?
It's for our bond, our large bond payment, and we pay one large payment a year and then the interest on it twice a year. So that's, that's what that is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does that complete that bond now that we talked about?
Uh, no, it ends in twenty twenty one, but the amount goes down significantly next year.
Right, okay, thank you.
Excellent. So, and that's a, that's a, a paid thing. So, uh, Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kirk? And I also agree, yes. Thank you very much. Item four, assignment of unassigned funds for the future purchase of a public works vehicle and police department squad discussion, possible recommendations.
Stan, I move to authorize the village administrator to transfer fifteen thousand of the public works truck assigned fund and fifteen thousand of the police department vehicle assigned fund from the unassigned fund balance.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Kirk, uh, discussion? Being we were all in finance, we pretty much understand that.
Uh, yeah, Melissa, uh, do you don't mind explaining to everyone what we do every year?
Yeah, so each year after we get our audit, um, we see how much our unassigned fund balance and percentages. Uh, the policy of the villages keep twenty to twenty-five percent. Uh, we are well above that, uh, fortunately enough. And so what we try to do each year is put a minimum of ten thousand in each of those assigned funds. Uh, so when it comes time to purchase a new vehicle, the money is in an assigned fund, uh, to be used for that. So this is um, based on our budget conversations, I suggested fifteen, um, to put in there, but you guys can choose to do what you like, so.
Well, if we got it, let's see. I mean, it's better than taking out loans for cars, that's for sure.
Right, right.
Okay, any, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, Kirk?
Yes.
Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
They, and I would say yes. Okay. Five, uh, unassigned uh, assignment, unassigned funds required village reevaluation twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, but discussion of possible recommendations.
Stan, I move to recommend slash move to transfer forty one thousand five hundred from the unassigned fund balance into an assigned fund to be used for the cost of the village re- reevaluation.
Thank you. Brian is your second?
Second.
Thank you Kirk, uh, discussion?
Uh, once again, Melissa, can you explain to everyone what this means?
Yeah, so the village, um, you can see in your issue statement, the villages will need to do a revaluation. Um, the prep work for it, field work will be next year and it needs to be completed um, by twenty twenty two, which it will be, um, in order to stay in compliance. And the cost of the revale is forty one thousand five hundred. Um, it's, they added it on to the annual maintenance costs of the assessor agreement. Um, so instead of trying to raise that budget line item to over twenty-five thousand dollars each year, um, the difference between the maintenance fee and the revale fee uh, it'd be good if we could put it into a sign fund just to have it, um, so we have it reserved for that revale costs.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
And yes. Okay, um, assignment from proceeds for the sale of police department squad discussion, possible recommendations.
Stan, I still recommend and move to assign the proceeds in the sale of the two thousand ten Ford interceptor to the police department assigned vehicle fund.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you Kirk. Uh, discussion?
A little background on this, Stan. Uh, two thousand nineteen, the village board approved the sale of the retired squad for for the two thousand ten Ford police interceptor and, uh, the squad sold it for twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars. Proceeds from the sale of the squad typically go into the public, I'm sorry, the public safety department uh, for vehicle funds for future purchase of police vehicles.
Thank you Tim. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. Uh, let's see, I started Kirk this time, Lee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, number seven, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three, assessor contract, Bomar appraisal, discussion, possible recommendations.
Stan, can I move to approve the maintenance revali- revaluation contract twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three with Bomar appraisal link?
Thank you. Brian is your second?
Second.
Thank you Kirk, uh, discussion? Well, I know one thing, I don't, I don't know if we were ever, you know, like, uh, to put out bids or anything on appraisals or whatever, but one of the meetings I was at or training sessions, whatever, many years ago is that, uh, they suggested if you've got an appraiser group that you really like and have been working with them, keep them because then they did it, the newest, the new group would have to come in and spend, spend a lot more money in wheels in order to, uh, to, uh, do the things that Bomar and Bomar, I think has been very fair. They're outstanding at barter review. I mean, uh, they're, you know, for, they've been great. So, uh, I, I just wanted to put in, that's a reason I think we're staying with Bomar. Melissa's at.
Yes, they were hired, I believe it was either two thousand eleven or two thousand and twelve.
Thank you.
When we first contacted with them and they actually did the last revale and got us back into compliance. Um, did everything to digital, uh, that was a requirement at that time. And yes, I agree, they're, they're great to work with and, you know, they're very informative, keep up to date on everything and if anybody has ever a question, we refer them right to them and we usually never hear back, so they must get their questions answered, so.
Right. Unlike pri- prior to those guys, we had some issues occasionally.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Anybody else? Okay, Brian?
Uh, yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
And yes. Okay, number eight, we're plowing right toward tonight. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three WPPA union contract discussion, possible recommendations and that's the police association for our officers that we now have a full staff of, uh, is there a motion?
Uh, Stan, I saw move. I'm not seeing the article out there to motion. Did, does anybody else see it out there? I just saw move on.
There's no issue statement out there on it.
Right, the agreement or that you stated Stan, I apologize.
No, that's all right. I just, uh.
On the union contract agreement.
We, uh.
Second, whatever.
Sorry, Brian, I would like to second that, please.
Okay.
No worries. Uh, yeah, and, uh, I, you know, we, uh, was, I thought it was good, good negotiation, good contract. It's a three-year contract, so, uh, and, uh, the, uh, everything seemed to go smoothly with that, so I'm, I'm hoping that we will be able to, uh, keep our officers and keep everything on the same keel that we've had. Evening Chief.
Yeah, Chief, any, any comments or anything about it?
No, I think it's, I sat through the meeting as kind of a, uh, neutral party, if you will, and I think the negotiation went well. I guess just to bring up to this committee for the, the, for those of you, there was wages was one of the topics we added or the, the village added to the contract, eight and a half hours of comp time that they're able to bank, uh, which I think actually will make it a little bit easier for us to, to get some vacation time in without with kind of allowing them a little extra time if need be. Um, and then there was some verbiage change to the um, the membership for, and not really a substantial one, I think maybe just cleaning it up and being uh, a little bit more, uh, fiscally uh, conservative on the numbers that we're, they're, we're gonna pay or potentially pay for union members to be, uh, at a health club um, for a single membership. So, really no, no substantial changes, but, uh, I'm happy that it's a three-year contract and I know that Melissa and I, uh, every time a union contract time comes around, it gets to be a little stressful and so it'll be nice to not have to do that every year.
And, and I would add that, uh, uh, I know, uh, Officer Peter Erickson is, uh, using the gym membership because we were on, uh, treadmills next to each other this morning at, uh, at Sherry's Gym, so, uh, uh, I'm happy to see that and I'm happy our officers are keeping in shape and being, uh, you know, it's, it's, and I think it's a good benefit for them. I hope more of them use it.
Were you, uh, at the same speed on those treadmills, Stan?
Ha, 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 ha. No, and I wasn't keeping up with him with any other activities that he does and it's like.
I wouldn't have been able to either, trust me.
I would like to also add just a thank you for the chief and all you guys. Uh, we really appreciate you and we appreciate you guys being part of our group.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And we pray for you every day. So, uh, okay, so, uh, let's see, that's not really a spending issue, so all in favor of the contract being approved, signal I was saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, aye. Opposed? Thank you. Uh, number nine, purchase of new boardroom chairs, discussion, possible recommendations.
Stan, I motioned to purchase twelve new lazy boy Arcadian executive chairs as recommended due to COVID nineteen for the village hall boardroom in an amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred and submit the expense through the routes to recovery grant for reimbursement.
Thank you Brian is your second?
Second.
Thank you Kirk, uh, discussion?
What are we doing with the old ones?
Um, well, you guys will have to kind of say if you want us, um, if we can go ahead and put them maybe on that auction site. Patrick mentioned, um, he could use some down at the public works garage.
Good.
Um, some of them, you know, have, are broke, so we have gotten rid of a few. Um, but there's a minimum of twelve needed in the boardroom. We have another fourteen in the back conference room, which will obviously keep most of those to, for around the conference room table. We won't get rid of all of them. Um, but if we can, I think that's what Patrick was mentioning, maybe, uh, putting them on the auction site along with the green chairs, um, that are in the audience part. Uh, we did get new chairs there because they weren't as costly. Um, so we did go ahead and buy new chairs for the audience part that are easy to clean. They're not the heavy upholstered ones. Um, so we got, we have those chairs as well.
Yeah, no, that's, the thing is that with that, that being a common area, a lot of times it's much easier, you know, you, we weren't able to, Patrick and his team weren't able to, you know, really wipe everything down when you've got claws showing and everything like that. You don't know how our, you know, our mitigation, you know, is, is, is working if we don't have, uh, uh, you know, something that we can wipe down. So I think this is a great, I mean, it's, you know, there are benefits to this COVID. I'm not, you know, and I'm not making light of that, but I mean, uh, no, it's, uh, we, we, we're stepping up. I mean, flu season's coming and the better stuff we can wipe down, the better it's gonna be.
So Melissa, you're just replacing the twelve chairs then?
Yes, um, the twelve in the boardroom, there's nine at the boardroom table, um, two where the recording secretary sits and one where the chief generally sits.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you guys wanted to add two extra or not. I mean, we have the ones in the back. Um, so mainly it's the twelve in the boardroom. Like I said, we have the ones in the back, so.
I think it's fine, yeah.
Comparable, we met, I went in and measured the height of the seat, um, the width, everything to, so they're comparable, but they're nicer, obviously, and should be more comfortable and things too and look better, so.
So that someday when they have board meetings that last a lot longer than they should, they could sit there a lot and be comfortable?
Right.
That ain't happening. Okay, so purchase of chairs, any further discussion? Hearing none. Pat, uh, Kirk?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, number ten, purchase of iPads or tablets for the village board discussion, possible recommendations.
Stan, I motioned to purchase seven new Apple iPad eights and cases in an amount not to exceed thirty-five hundred for the village board to be used for electronic meetings due to COVID nineteen and submit expense through the routes to recovery grant for reimbursement.
Excellent.
Second.
Well done.
So, there are two other ones in your packet there that she listed. I, I motioned on the one that I liked, to be honest.
So that one, Brian, is more use for everything because when we originally did it, it was for the, uh, reviewing the meetings, the new, uh, Apple i eight is for even COVID stuff?
Yeah. It's a good one. I think, uh, I think Melissa, there's one even newer than the, uh, generation than the iPad eight.
Is there? I, I Googled what's the latest generation of iPad and it said, but I, you know, I don't know.
I think the newer one is actually, uh, Air Pro.
It is, yep.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so I was just looking at strictly iPad.
Right, this is, this is a nice box, so.
This is a nice box, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I can have a background other than my, uh.
Oh, yeah.
We.
Can't wait to see what you put on there.
Able to buy these bolt anchors that we got from the village and keep them or, uh?
Um, I'm gonna have to check on that. There's really strict guidelines as far as what we can do with public property that's paid with taxpayer money. Um, so I need to check on that. I don't know if we can, we may either have to, like, donate them or, um, staff uses them or something. I, I don't know. I have to check into that.
No, that's fine. I just.
It's, they're now worth it, Stan. Unless they're free. No, because the, the, go ahead, Melissa.
No, I was just gonna say, um, when you sell public property, it has to be, usually if you sell it, it has to be available to anybody to purchase. Um, not just specific people, but, um, yeah, that's the kind of the hard part about that. So I'll, I'll double check and see what we can do with those old ones and let, let you guys know.
Do you wanna put those on the auction site? I've seen those on there.
Yeah, just.
You gotta clean them and everything.
Right.
Well, and also, you guys, those things are running iOS twelve.
Yeah.
Um, the one, the i, my iPad's running iOS fourteen, so Apple's starting to not support that older version. Just be aware of that.
Right. Yeah, I'll find out what we can do with them for sure and let you guys know so you can make the decision on that.
Okay, that sounds good. Uh, okay, that's a spending issue, Brian?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
And yes. Okay, item eleven, HVAC improvements for village hall, discussing possible recommendations.
Stan, I motioned to purchase four GPS units to be installed by Dakin as recommended due to COVID nineteen for the village hall in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars and submit the expense through the routes to recovery grant for reimbursement.
Thank you Brian is your second?
Second.
Kirk, discussion?
Hey Melissa, how long is that routes to recovery thing good for? I mean, how, is there an end date?
About another week.
Yeah, a little bit middle, yeah.
Really trying to, uh, hurry and try and get these things through, like, like chairs and the iPads, I need to get, you know, purchase those and basically probably pay for them immediately rather than getting an invoice so that we can make that cutoff because we definitely don't want to miss the cutoff, so.
Right.
I have to have, the deadline is November sixth, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Couple days after the election, you could be able to fit that in?
Sure. And Jessica been helping out researching things. Nathan researched the tablets and the iPad and got those kind of together for me and so I'll probably put him in charge of taking care of the purchase.
Delegating is good.
Yep, so, yeah, we'll get it taken care of because we want to make sure we get the routes recovery money for it, so.
Captain Bly joined us. But, uh, we'll wait for him for a minute, okay? Uh, that's, that's, that's a spender, uh, Kirk?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes, and, uh, so we're done with that. The item twelve is we are adjourned at six fifty-one. I'd like to call the village, welcome everyone, and call the village North Hudson regular board trustees meeting to order on Tuesday, twenty seventh, October twenty twenty at seven PM. Uh, I have a short invocation. Uh, thank you, dear father, for the love you have shown us and this nation. We pr- we pray that you continue to bless us, help the economy grow stronger and lead us to a point of such high standards that the world will notice that you truly do have your hand upon us. And we pray for everyone in this upcoming election that, is, that their choices according to their hearts. Roll call.
Trustees had. Here. Leaf?
Here.
Here. Matts? Uh, Nelson?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustees Ice?
Here.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you, everybody mute that's not talking because I'm getting some background noise?
Yeah, we're getting the feedback coming through, yep.
That's better. Okay, uh, number two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of six October twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy, uh, any, uh, corrections, amendments or, uh, additions to the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries, uh, let's see, item three, comments from the floor, opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues or opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Melissa, was there anybody sending any questions?
No, there was not.
Okay, and I don't see anybody else on the Zoom event, so, uh, we will skip on to number four, which is, uh, new business from the border staff, president's comments, uh, I have several, uh, just, uh, the November meeting and everything, but I'd like to, you know, we had a snow event quite earlier than we're used to and, uh, and it came right near, uh, the garbage recycle day. So I'd like to remind the citizens who that are putting their garbage and recycle containers out to please keep them in the end of their driveway, not in the street. Uh, the plows can, they can't go curb to curb if we, if they gotta dodge all those, uh, recycling garbage bins, it'll make it a lot easier. And then also, uh, remember the twenty-four hour parking, uh, uh, ordinance that we have. We would like everyone to make sure, especially during the winter, snow events that, uh, that we have them off the streets as soon as the impossible. I know it's not possible in a lot of areas to keep them off the streets, but please move them from side to side or whatever, uh, so that, uh, Patrick and his team did a spectacular job on the first one. And, uh, we want to keep that up and it, it saves us a lot if we don't have to come back and, uh, and plow, because I know with that heavy snow we had, there was, there were some major boulders out there, you know, where people, they couldn't get to the curb because, uh, uh, there was cars or whatever, uh, bins out there. Uh, the other thing is, uh, a reminder to everyone, uh, uh, Halloween is coming up this Saturday and after Halloween's events are over, we have to set our clocks back to daily, or to us, you know, central standard time. So I'm hoping that, uh, that, uh, everyone will, uh, remember to do that and that, that they will have a safe happy Halloween, however they choose to sell, or I mean, celebrate with the, uh, uh, present, uh, events going on. Uh, I'd like to say, uh, uh, on November third, uh, is election day. I'm pretty sure Melissa will, uh, have something to share with us on that, that we've had, uh, lots of people already voting and, uh, it looks to be a beautiful day though, so I mean, uh, standing in line won't be nearly as bad, but hopefully you'll get it done this week or whatever, so we don't have that kind of lines. Uh, November eleventh, uh, Veterans Day. Uh, it's a day we honor our veterans that have served and, and still serve. Uh, it's, uh, it's a very special day. It's the end of, uh, it was the end of World War One and, uh, I know at the courthouse, they usually have a, an event. Hopefully they will not cancel that this year because of the, uh, issues that people are addressing and also I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe, wonderful deer season and Thanksgiving. Melissa?
Yes, so I'm sure everybody's aware the general election is Tuesday, November third. Polls will be open from seven AM to eight o'clock PM. In-person absentee voting is still going on this week. Uh, we are open, uh, tomorrow till four thirty and Thursday and Friday we're open eight to five. So Friday's the last day to in-person absentee vote and to, uh, register to vote. Um, after that, the, um, there's no voting or, uh, voter registration on the Monday before any election, so if you miss it on, by Friday, uh, you'll come on election day and you can do it there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Item five is plan commission. I don't know if, uh, if, uh.
Stan, the plan commission did meet. Um, they met a year ago to re- to, um, and to approve a conditional use permit for an indoor auto, an independent indoor auto dealership at two thirty-five Monroe Street North. And one of the conditions was just to review it in a year. So they met to review it and, um, they extended it, the permit until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you Jessica.
Yes.
And there's, we, we have no action on that or anything like that, but we thank you for the update. Uh, item six, uh, personnel and finance committee meeting, uh, recommendations. A is claims approval requested.
Uh, Stan, can I move to recommend the board to approve the second November twenty twenty non-reclaims of two hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-six cents?
Thank you Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there, uh, any comments or discussions?
Uh, once again, Melissa, can you fill them in for the, why the payment's bigger, please?
Yes, so, uh, we have a bond payment, uh, that is due each year and so this is our one large bond payment is in there of the two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um, so that one makes up the majority of this claims packet this year, or this month, excuse me.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Okay, that's pretty good on this. Kathy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, Brian's gotta be around there someplace. Brian?
Yes.
Yeah? Did I get you ready?
You got me ready, but I'll say yes again.
Okay, that's good because that's, that's a big number and I'll also say yes. Thank you. But Phil is not there.
Phil's not here, yep, yep.
I'm getting caught you. So, uh, well. Let's see. So, uh, we went through that, so the item B, distractions are not good. Assignment of unassigned funds for the future purchase of public works vehicle, police and police department squad approval requested.
Stan, I'd like to move to authorize the village administrator to transfer fifteen thousand of the public works truck, truck assigned fund and fifteen thousand of the pub, the. The police department vehicle assigned fund from the unassigned fund balance.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second. Kirk.
Further discussion?
Go ahead, Melissa.
So each year after we get our audit, we try and put some money aside into these assigned funds for the future purchase of vehicles for. Versus taking loans out for them, so luckily we're able to put at least fifteen thousand in each one of those assigned funds this this year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We'll start with Brian this time.
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
And yes.
Can you forget me? Yes.
I just thought I just said Kathy.
That's right, I'm usually late for these, so.
One of these we have to do on this Zoom thing. It's much better in person. Okay, and Phil's not here, so that passes. We'll go on to. Assignment of unassigned funds for the required village reevaluation. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two approval requested.
Stan, I move to recommend slash move to transfer the forty-one thousand five hundred from the unassigned fund balance into an assigned fund to be used for the cost of the village rebal- revaluation.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion.
Does somebody want to explain what this is for people that might not know what it is?
Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
So. Basically, the municipality has to assess within ten percent of full value at least once in five years. And if we start to go under or over that ten percent. You have, if you do it for so many consecutive years, you have to do a full village revaluation. And with the housing market fluctuating and stuff so much, it's really dropped down. I think we're in the seventies. Seventy percentile this year, so we have been out of compliance for three consecutive years. So Boomer needs to start the field work for it next year and it has to be completed by twenty twenty-two. The full revel, so that's when it'll be it'll be done by and. Instead of trying to budget that extra cost for the revel on top of the. Annual maintenance fees for the accessory each year. The cost could be put into an assigned fund that we can draw from for that difference rather than try and budget for it each year because it is a significant amount. It's. An extra, you know, like fourteen thousand plus each year for the next three years, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Oh, I don't know, we gotta do a roll call again and I'll start with Kathy.
Yes, that's okay, yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yes. Phil's here.
Phil's here.
Phil's here?
Out of the fields of some European village.
So noted, thank you, Phil, for joining us.
I think I missed the same one last year, like it's just not on my radar.
Yeah, it's tough when you're not retired to be able to fit all these things in, so. But no, welcome, Phil. Okay, that passes. Item D, assignment of proceeds from the sale of police department squad approval requested.
Stan, I recommend move to assign the proceeds from the sale of the two thousand ten Ford Interceptor to the police department assigned vehicle fund.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Discussion.
It's a quick background on March, the March fifth board meeting approved the sale of the retired squad vehicle. And our North Hudson P D A utilized the Wisconsin surplus online auction to sell the retired squad for twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars. And typically these type of proceeds will go into the police department assigned vehicle fund for future purchase of police police vehicles.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Let's start with Phil this time.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much unanimous. Item E, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three assessor contract, Boomer appraisal approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the maintenance revaluation contract of twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three for Bo- Boomer appraisal Inc.?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion. What crickets?
Melissa, do you want to fill this?
Yeah, history as far as how long we've had them and so forth, yep.
Sure, so we've had Boomer since about, I think, eleven, two thousand eleven or two thousand and twelve, they were hired to do a full revel of the village. Back then, and so this will be the second time. They also converted everything over to electronic files. They were required to do that by statute, so. We've had them since then and they do great work, I believe, for the village and. When we have questions about assessments and things like that, we refer residents to them. They answer all their questions, so.
Thank you, and as I mentioned earlier in finance, one of my early training sessions when I. Some of this job was that. The one, the thing they stressed at that was if you have an appraisal. Excuse me, if they have an appraisal firm that you've been working with and you're happy with. Keep them no matter if somebody comes in cheaper because. It did, you know, they'd have to do the all the extra legwork and stuff, so yeah, and Boomer's been great, you know, whether it's border review or anything, any questions? Like Melissa said earlier, that if, you know, the tax creators call. We refer them to Boomer and they've answered the questions and they haven't had to call back, so. So yeah, they've done a great job for us and we're very happy with them, so.
And they're, just a note too, their annual maintenance fees have been pretty consistent each year. They've had minimal increases each year, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go with spending and Brian first.
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Phil?
Yes.
And yes, thank you very much unanimous. F is twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three W P P A union contract. This is for our police officers. Under the sergeant, the other officers, the sergeant and the chief are salaried, so they're not included in this, so. Motion and or in discussion.
Stan, I so moved to our three-year contract extension for our W P P A unit contract.
Thank you, Tim. Lori, that was you?
No, it was me.
Kathy.
Kathy. I can't keep track of all these phases and stuff, so I don't hear so good. Okay, so discussion. Explanation, Tim, you want to give them any background?
No, I thought it went really well. I liked that Chief commented a little bit. He said it, of course, and. And just his overall feeling on a three-year contract and so forth.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for anyone?
Yeah, Chief gave a quick update of what it was like.
Kirk, what was that?
I'm looking to see if the chief is out there, that he's still on.
I'm still here.
Yeah, you want to comment, Chief? Thank you.
Again, yeah, so like I said, in in the finance committee meeting. I did sit in as a kind of a the person on the bubble as far as I I have interest in both sides of what happens and I thought it was a really good. Negotiation. I think the major changes. That happened were just the wages that were negotiated and then an increase of eight and a half hours into the comp bank that they're able to utilize, which I think. Benefited both sides, which was good, and then just some language changes to the membership to a health club. For a single membership for each officer and and kind of kind of wrapping that up into making sure that the language was was. Accurate and we can move forward with that. So I know that Stan mentioned during finance that. He's seen one of our officers working out and I know that there are other officers that are utilizing the the benefit as well and will. Continue to encourage them to stay physically fit.
And one other thing to add to that, Chief, thank you. We were presented a kind of an overall summary of the surrounding areas and and where we fit in as far as overall compensation. I think. We're very competitive. I think we feel that we've met what we feel. Would help our police sticks stay for some time, so I think the overall. Discussions went really well, to be honest with you.
I agree. Okay, that's a spending and or no, that's just an approval from a contract, so all in favor, say goodbye, saying aye? Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, passes. G, purchase of new barroom chairs approval requested.
Stan, I moved to purchase twelve new lazy boy Arcadian executive chairs as recommended due to COVID nineteen for the village hall boardroom in an amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred. And submit the expense through the routes to recovery grant for reimbursement.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Discussion. I know one of the reasons for doing this is that, you know, is everyone that could, if we remember back far enough when we were in the boardroom. That the the chair, the chairs are getting a little thread. Wear and harder for Patrick and his team to wipe down and make sure that they're sanitizing properly, that room is used by a lot of different folks. So being able to make sure they're sanitized, to stop the spread of. Disease or. Virus or whatever they're gonna call it, it's, I think it's a great deal and they were happy to be able to have the. Government help out with this a little bit, so. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Phil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much unanimous again. Okay, and last. Oops, excuse me. Oh, that somebody said something. Purchase of iPads or tablets for the village board approval requested.
Stan, I moved to purchase seven iPads and cases in an amount not to exceed thirty-five hundred for the village board to be used for electronic meetings due to COVID nineteen. And submit expense through the routes to recovery grant for reimbursement.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion. Would one of my tech guys want to tell us about these new devices or the improvements or? Is that not? Part of the discussion?
The iPads are five, five years newer. The I O S is no longer or rarely being updated on our current iPads. There are like several versions behind the newer iPad that I'm looking at right now, which is my personal one. Both Tim and I think this is a good box.
Yeah, newest and latest, I think we'll be fine.
Also, our first iPads were not for COVID. They were just for us trying to save on waste, which we did. Getting rid of paper, so this is a good upgrade for all of it.
I agree. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's see who did start with last time. Let's go with Phil this time.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Alrighty then. Item seven, Public Works Committee recommendations, Chair update, Brian?
Stan, we did meet and we have a couple items to bring forward to the board. Item number one is HVAC improvements for the village hall. And my motion is to purchase four GPS units and that GPS stands for something differently, different. Patrick, what does that GPS stand for again?
Global Plasma Systems.
There you go. Four GPS units to be installed by Dakin as recommended due to COVID nineteen for the village hall in an amount not to exceed six thousand. And submit the expense through the routes to recovery grant for reimbursement.
I can.
There's second, is it? Kirk, did you second that?
Phil did.
Phil did. See, I don't, I can get Phil on my screen, so I didn't get to see this look smooth. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Brian?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Yes.
How did I? How did I?
Kathy.
It's Friday and I don't know.
Okay, Brian, you got one more, yeah?
Yes, item number two. Is the a possible alternate alternate route for Rod and Gun Club discussion, possible action. It was brought to my attention that one of our residents was. Talking to Hudson Public Works in their last meeting. I think it was around the sixth of this month. And they were asking for help with a nuisance, a dust nuisance. And it's related to that private road that you see on the map in front of you. In your packet. That's up there by the dump and the ball fields and the Hudson Public Works. Inside our corporate limits, however, and so it is becoming a nuisance issue. And Hudson in that meeting came up with several good alternatives to fix at least point two miles of this. From, you know, basically where it comes off the road off of Kratley. Down to the gate of the Rod and Gun Club. And then they also suggested that they might want us to consider allowing them to cut from the our dead end road there, Summer Street. Cut a road through there right to the gun club, which would, you know, really. In their mind would lessen all that traffic and they wouldn't have to deal with that dirt road quite as much up there. I think they have to deal with it either way, in in my opinion, as long as the the. The sports facilities up there. And they're saying that there's eight hundred cars a week that are going down that private road. So thought it should be brought to our attention. I don't know if the chief is aware of this yet or not, Chief.
The only reason that I'm aware of it is that Patrick came into my office and made me aware of some of the things going on. I can tell you that per our typical. Procedure, I have not received a complaint from a resident. So I guess no investigation on my part has been done. And I think, I guess Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe that would be. What should be done if if there is a nuisance complaint that needs to be done on this particular issue and then to try to resolve it based on our ordinances. But I haven't done anything about it at this point. Yeah, I mean, I I've heard a little bit about this and, you know, putting the new road through the existing residential subdivision. I don't think is the right way to go here. You know, there's an existing access. You know, maybe work with. Work with the city, work with the town, work with the gun club. I don't know how many residents there are actually complaining, if it's just one or more than one. You know, the gun club's been there for a long time. The road's been there before those houses came. I'm just not sure that the scope of problem. You just don't want to try to.
That was my first question. Sorry, Paul. That was my first question is, Chief, how many other calls have you gotten for this? But you answered, which was little to none.
My, yeah, my answer is at this point, I have no complainants, so zero calls.
Well, and that said, they. We did, we were contacted, I mean, I was contacted by one of the residents and. And I said, well, first of all, I said, that's the city of Hudson's property that's, you know, where the road goes through there and the gun club. And so it's out of our jurisdiction, and then the gun club is part of town of Hudson. So that's also out of our jurisdiction, so I believe that's probably why they went. Down to to Hudson to check that out. Yeah, the other part is, is that. There is not, there's not possible to do any kind of investigation and or whatever, probably till May or June of next year because. because uh, it's not a lot of dust issues on that road right now during the winter when everything's froze down.
Uh, the resident was saying, at least to Hudson Public Works, that they have plenty of film, video, uh, pictures. Uh, they're, you know, it's, it sounds like it's kids that are just ripping up the road up there and essentially, you know, creating large dust clouds. And it's causing respiratory problems for our, our residents up there. They cannot open their windows during the summer.
So isn't, isn't there also an issue there when the ball fields are pretty active as far as the parking alongside that road? And if you make that a road, wouldn't that be even more, even more a concern? I mean, I just, I don't. I'm just looking at the logistics around that ball field and what, on the activities that do happen when they're, when they're playing throughout the week. And I, you know, it's been a long, you know, fortunately, it's been a number of years since I've been out there with my kids because they're all grown up, but I do remember a lot of vehicles parking alongside that road, that, that temporary road, private road, wherever hell it is.
Well, and I think until somebody, if they have film, fine, but they haven't lodged a complaint with anyone that we know of, at least with our chief. Maybe they have at the county with the sheriff. I don't know. But until that happens, it's not really, I mean, it's, I mean, what do we do with that? I mean, it needs to be documented.
They reached out to us once, Patrick?
Yes, they reached out to us once. Well, it sounds to me like, I mean, if you're talking about kids tearing up and down the road, that's not a village problem. That's a city of Hudson enforcement problem, it seems to me.
So that, that even though the city of Hudson owns that property, it's within the village of North Hudson, so it would be our jurisdiction. I have not at the police department received any complaints about traffic issues with anybody tearing up or spinning around. And I would absolutely send officers out there to enforce that had we received a complaint. So if you have a complaintant, I would urge you to have them contact my office and we will start the process.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, item eight, public safety committee recommendations. Tim, what do you got?
Yeah, Sam, we did meet and we have one item to carry forward. I have a motion to move to approve the updated Village of Dr. Hudson Emergency Operation Plan dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion?
As your emergency operations director for the village, I, I just will give you a quick update. Um, there's an issue statement in front of you, but basically just want to bring to light that this has not been updated in five years since two thousand and fifteen. Uh, a majority of that is because I was short-staffed and doing all kinds of other different jobs. But for the most part, this uh, this is just an update on contact information, adding a few things related to some um, uh, sheltering locations and then also just making sure that the current legal statutes that were in there are accurate. Um, really no other major changes. And, and so things should look the same as if you've ever looked at the emergency operation plan before. A major piece of this is that we need to have these in place so that when we do have emergencies, as we have a couple of different times for um, you know, tree limbs or loss of property because of a major storm, that uh, this helps us to move forward with setting declarations and then potentially, even though sometimes the money takes a while to get back to us, getting reimbursed for a, a large majority of the costs associated with that cleanup.
Thank you, chief. Is there uh, any other questions or comments for the chief? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor of the emergency operation plan being approved, signify by by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, unanimous. Okay, public welfare committee, Kirk?
Uh, we did not meet.
How about park board?
Uh, we did meet, but nothing to be brought to the board.
Thank you. Um. Now, item eleven, the board may convene into closed session pursuant to nineteen point eight-five pair and one pair in lowercase e to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of prop- public properties if or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to water and sewer ad hoc committee updates. Is there any uh, reason to go into a closed session for the ad hoc?
And I moved to go into closed session.
Kirk, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor of going into closed session, signify by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in closed session, chief. Okay, we're back in the open session. There's no uh actionable items coming out of closed session. So uh, with that, I will declare this meeting adjourned at seven fifty-six. Thank you all for watching and thank you all for participating. I hope you have a wonderful, blessed week.
Good luck, Paul. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck, Paul.